All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Marlee Thomas. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and welcome to our live debate between the candidates for Tippecanoe County Council at large. As I mentioned, thank you all for being here tonight and thank you to the ones at home who are watching the livestream as well. This debate is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters and WLFI in partnership with the Social Studies Department at Jefferson High School. Our debate will be co-moderated by myself and also Jefferson High School student Basil Altstadt. The candidates have agreed to the same set of rules governing this debate. So each candidate is going to give an opening statement followed by questions from the moderators. Candidates have one minute to respond to each question. The debate will end with closing statements. And our timers over here, they're going to make sure that we follow to the agreed times. We extended invitations to all candidates running for Tippecanoe County Council at large. The candidates here that we have this evening, John Basham, Dean Bertelli, Katie Bundar, Ben Carson, Amanda Eldridge, Barry Richard, and Kevin Underwood. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance and have agreed not to bring prepared notes for this as well. So just a couple of minutes ago, we drew names from a hat to determine who would make the first opening statements. So tonight, our opening statement is going to be started by Eldridge. Go right ahead.
Hello, Eldridge, and I'm running for county council at large. I'm choosing to run because I want to support the community that I've made my home and give smaller towns like Battleground where I live a seat at the table as the county continues to grow. I was born here, grew up in northern Indiana, but moved back for the opportunities that Tippecanoe County offered. I took a job and worked for Tippecanoe County as a case manager with committee corrections because I wanted to continue my experience in public safety. I've been a corrections officer, a pre-trial officer, and I have volunteered as a cost in Cozy Asco County for approximately four years. My education has also been studying the criminal justice system, so I understand how connected so many things in our community are. My experience has shown me a community is successful when things like affordable workforce housing are available, there's access to healthcare and emergency services, and environmental protections like clean water are our focus. I want to continue to give back to my community. I have volunteered to support voters and educate Hoosiers on state legislation, have been a mentor to teens, and have gone to the community to put smoke detectors in buildings. I want to see this community grow, and I believe that my experience can help with that growth. So I want to thank the League, WFI, and Jeff for putting on this debate, and I look forward to spending the next hour with you. Thank you.
And now Basham.
Good evening, constituents of Tippecanoe County and voters. My name is John Basham. I've been in office and I've enjoyed it. A little bit of history about myself, I was born and raised in Tippecanoe County. I've had a few businesses. I've attended IUPUI in environmental. I've had a lot of banking classes. I had American Institute of Banking, which later on, I ended up owning a bank for 22 years, Lafayette Community Bank. I worked at Eli Lilly in environmental. I know how to handle money. I started a business. I had $14 to my name in 1969, and I started buying old houses over at Purdue University and started pyramid-ing with those homes. And I ended up with about 1,000 of them. So I know how to handle money, and I'm a local citizen. I'm concerned about the welfare and public safety. Public safety is one of my main issues, putting more resource officers in the schools. Parents say goodbye to their kids at 8:00, and they get a call at 11:00. Since right now, we're in the process of trying to find nine more resource officers. So once again, my name is John Basham. I was born and raised in this community, and I know how to hold the purse strings of Tippecanoe County. When I took office in 2009, it was in bad shape. If you look at the records today, we're in great shape, and I continue that we will do that. Thank you very much, and I think I'm worthy. I appreciate your support and your vote for this coming election.
And now Bertelli.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dean Bertelli, and I'm running for Tippecanoe County Council at large as a Libertarian. I moved here with my family in 2004, and I've been a resident since then. I graduated from McCutcheon High School and attended one semester at IB Tech before serving eight honorable years in the United States Marine Corps with two deployments to the Middle East in support of operations inherent resolve and enduring freedom. I now work at SIA as a tool repair associate in the engine plant. I served my country, and now I wish to serve my community on the county council with my goal being to reduce and eliminate unnecessary spending of the county residents' tax money and unnecessary spending of the taxpayers' dollars, in turn leaving more money in the pockets of our residents, along with ensuring that their taxes are spent on only things that are beneficial to the county as a whole and public safety. I am a political novice, but I believe that I can help make changes necessary as new blood on the county council. I would also like to reduce the tax burden and also improve upon the overall well-being, health, and like I said, public safety of the Tippecanoe County as a whole. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and thank you for your support. I appreciate the opportunity to get my words to the county as a whole. Thank you.
And Bundar.
If you build it, they will come. We've built it, they are coming. Tippecanoe County is experiencing a period of rapid growth and change. For 14 years, I directed Foodfinders Food Bank through a period of rapid growth and change. Before my work at Foodfinders, I directed an organization that renovated homes and sold them to first-time homebuyers. I want to bring my experience leading change and creating housing to our county government. The county's housing shortage must be addressed. We need to create more housing for those moving here and for first-time homebuyers. We need to incentivize investment in existing neighborhoods, and we need robust planning to ensure that we have fire protection, ambulance service, and law enforcement for new neighborhoods. If we are successful in attracting employees of new companies to both work and live here, our tax base will increase and a multitude of civic improvements will be possible. I will work to protect our water and natural resources. If elected, I will bring both my considerable experience and a fresh perspective to our county government. Thank you.
Richard, or Carson and Richard.
Good evening. My name is Ben Carson, not to be confused with the guy who ran for president in 2016. I'm just running for county council. I was born here at Home Hospital where my mom worked as a labor and delivery nurse, and my dad has worked for the city of Lafayette for over 30 years. Growing up, I quickly realized a valuable lesson, that one person can have a profound impact on so many other people around them. After graduating from Purdue University, I spent some time teaching, and now I'm a proud small business owner of an education technology company. While these two jobs have been very rewarding in my life, I've noticed that there was a lot of challenges that our counties facing that I simply couldn't ignore, from public safety to affordable housing to all the other issues that are affecting our economy. And I decided that these were issues that I could not idly sit by on. Now, our current sitting county councillors have sat there for a long time, and they've done a pretty good job. But as our county is growing and evolving, our elected officials need to as well. As a county councillor, I will strengthen public safety by ensuring competitive pay for mental health workers and our officers. We will also incentivize affordable housing by working with builders and developers to create workforce housing and low-income senior housing to drive down the cost for everybody. And we'll also recognize that water is a safeguarded asset that we need to control so that we can benefit our own people and our own economy. My name is Ben Carson, and I'm running for county council, and I will bring timeless values and a new voice with tireless energy if you vote for me, which is what I'm asking for, for you on November 5th. Thank you.
Richard.
Good evening. First of all, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity, the League of Women's Voters and WLFI. We really appreciate the opportunity and all of you that made your way out here this evening. Barry Richard for county council. It's been an honor throughout my life to be able to serve our county in multitude of areas, especially being very diversified. I've worked with the very young to the very elderly in all the work that I've been able to do. I've been a lifelong resident of Tippecanoe County. My wife Cindy, we've been married for 44 years. I have three adult children, Clayton, who's a former major league baseball player, Casey, who is in administration here at Lafayette Jeff High School, Taylor, who's in education and very helpful with all the businesses and family affairs. We knew exactly our path as a family, and that's what it takes. Our family has been involved in everything I've been working with. So what I want to do is continue serving our community as a police officer, a city councilman, a county councilman, as the dare officer, the first dare officer in Tippecanoe County. I know what it takes, what we need to do as a sheriff. I was the first and only sheriff that's ever taken $100,000 out of commissary to give it back to the general fund to make sure there was appropriate raises for our deputies. So I'm very knowledgeable and aware of what we need to do financially, and I appreciate your support. Barry Richard.
And Underwood.
I'm Kevin Underwood for Tippecanoe County Council at Large. I think there's three notable things that you need to know about me. First of all, I want to continue to bring a sound, common sense approach to our county government and preserve our county's resources, not only for our current generation, but for generations to come. Second of all, I'm a lifelong resident of Tippecanoe County. My wife Sherri and I farm with our family in northwest Tippecanoe County. We have three adult children and one grandson. We consider them to be the most important crop that we've ever grown on our farm. And of course, I'm not only a father and a family man, but I'm also a farmer and businessman. And third of all, I wanted to say that I am a proven community leader. I have volunteered and led not only at our local level, whether it's been in 4H or at our local church, but all the way up through at the county council, as the council president, and also as one of the 10 district representatives on our Indiana Farm Bureau Board of Directors. I want to continue to be one of our critical thinkers as we move forward into the future in Tippecanoe County. Thank you.
Thank you all for your opening statements, and now we're going to move right along to our first question. Why are you running for office? First up, we have Basham.
First of all, my name is John Basham again, and why am I running for office? Well, I mentioned earlier, I was born and raised at Home Hospital, born, and I've loved this community. I've been here all my life. I've given a lot back to this community through work, and it just doesn't get any better to live in Lafayette, Indiana. So, and once again, public safety is one of my main cores that I'm after to improve on, and I think we've done a great job. 2009, when I took office, we were in dire straits. They wanted to build a juvenile detention center. It was $22.5 million to build, $2.5 million to operate on friendly money. We didn't have it, and I was house divided. I had my wife and Loretta Rush, they were on this side, and I'd go to all these places and check out these centers, but we couldn't do it. I'm not saying I'm against it now, but at that time, it was a big decision, and I've saved this county a lot of money. You name it. I was appointed by John Canaco. I built a sewer, 145 homes in Romney, Indiana.
You've reached your time limit. Thank you. Bertelli.
Again, my name is Dean Bertelli. I'm running for county council at large because I believe that we need some change that is necessary after having incumbent council members that have done essentially the same thing year in and year out. I think that the younger generation has a different outlook on the way that we spend our money and, like Mr. Basham said, our public safety. I believe that we are doing a good job, but we can do better. I believe that our school systems need better protection for our kids, seeing as what is going on in today's world with the schools across not only our county but our country. I think that I would be able to make those changes in working with the rest of the council members going forward. And I would, like I said, I think it's time for younger council members to step in and make some of those changes. Thank you.
Bundar, up next.
I'm running for office because I enjoyed my years at Foodfinders so much, and I felt really empowered to make big changes for people that were hungry and throughout 16 counties. We increased food distribution by 300%. Since I've been retired, I've wanted to continue giving back, and this opportunity came along, and I wanted to run, especially after hearing about the water resources and the LEAP pipeline. So I want to run because I think we can do more. I don't think we have to just maintain what we have. We're having this wonderful growth, this investment in our community, and I think there are so many things that we can do and improve. I think we need to keep what we love, but we can add things. We can reimagine some things. So that's why I'm running. I want to do more for Tippecanoe County. Thank you.
Carson.
I'd say I'm running for two major reasons. The first one, as I alluded to in my opening speech, is that I feel the imperative to give back to my community. There have been so many different aspects of role models and services in the community that have been directly responsible for the education that I've received today and the economic rewards that I've reaped, and so I consider it my responsibility to give back. But the second reason that I'm running is because we need to have a plan. Right now, our county is growing very rapidly. Recently, we were all asked this question of how can we handle this? And one of the sitting county councilmen said that we don't need to have a plan. I think that if you're on the county council, we do need to have a plan. Previously, in past county councils, we've had a strategic budget, and one of the first things that I'd like to do is implement medium and long-term strategic budgets into the county council so that we can be better prepared for issues that are going to face our county in the next 10 to 20 years.
And Eldridge. Oh, Barry Richard.
Thank you. I really felt it's an honor to represent the community and continue to serve the community. My vast diversification of many areas allows me the knowledge, especially being the sheriff, which our sheriff's department had the biggest bulk of the county budget. Every year, we were under budget, so I know what it takes to stay within a budget. I can see through businesses that I've been not only part of but run. You take an apartment complex, a government subsidized apartment complex I managed for eight years, and we brought it out of the red into the black and made it very profitable and very good for the public. As well as the local non-for-profit Boys and Girls Club, we have built a tremendous amount of support and a very solid foundation of financial responsibility to continue to serve the youth. We take all those practices and knowledge and put it into the county government, and that's where we can make sure we advocate for the department heads, and I'm a strong advocate for all of our department heads, making sure they have what they need. Thank you.
And Underwood.
I said in my opening statement that I want to continue to bring a sound, common sense approach to county government, and I mean that. As a family man and as a businessman, I understand what it is for each one of our citizens to have to pay the bills and figure out how to make their dollars stretch in order to be able to meet all the needs that they have for their families. And I'm one of the very few that have actually had to pay a payroll and actually meet those expenses at a business level as well. And so while we think about in the county how we're going to do that in the future, strategic planning is one of those things that we have done very effectively in the last several years, and also working within the council to put together committees that have analyzed and moved in order to be able to analyze and do different things. For instance, we put together a committee that analyzed and figured out how we were going to backfill and make sure that we had adequate funding for our public safety. Thank you.
And Eldridge.
So there are a lot of reasons that I'm running for county council. As I stated in my opening, part of it is I want to give the small areas in our county a seat at the table. I live in Battleground. I have issues there with having access to resources. I might have a volunteer fire department, but I don't have ambulance services. Anyone in that area knows we're in a food desert. Reliable internet and cell phone service are spotty at times. I want to make sure, as we are developing in this county, that we are considering the outside areas, because we can't forget Battleground, Americas, West Point. They are part of our county, not just because they're not in Lafayette or West Lafayette. But I also am running because I've worked at the county level. I have worked and been impacted by the decisions that the county council makes, and I love that we all want to support public safety. But I've been on the end where we are dealing with massive turnover from our emergency services and our public servants. So I want to make sure that we are doing what we can to support our employees in our county, because we need to be fiscally mindful and make sure that we're continuing the growth.
You have reached your time. Thank you.
Dean Bertelli and Katie Bundar. Bertelli, what to you is the most pressing issue facing this county, and what is your solution to it?
Right now, I think the most pressing issue would be the LEAP project pipeline. I believe that the solution to that is to stop it at all costs. That pipeline is looking to take millions of gallons of water from Tippecanoe County and send it to a county elsewhere with no benefit to us whatsoever. I think that along with taking the water away from our companies and our residents and our wildlife and moving it to that company or to the other county has absolutely no benefit to us in any way, shape, or form. And I think that whatever the county council as a whole can do to stop that is what we should do, obviously staying within our budget and making sure we don't spend any more of the taxpayers' dollars than we have to, but also ensuring that we do what is the benefit of those taxpayers. Thank you.
Bundar, on to you.
I think the most pressing issue facing us is the rapid growth that we are experiencing, and it's likely to continue with new corporations coming to Tippecanoe County. And I think that we need to do planning, as everyone else has said, and I think we need to have housing for people. And I think instead of just saving money, we need to think about having some amenities that will attract these employees of new corporations to live here, not just commute and work here, because we need them to contribute to our tax base so that we can continue to grow and improve the community. We don't want to just have neighborhoods that don't last very long and urban sprawl, and that's what will happen if we don't plan for growth. We need to be very proactive and plan for growth and preserve our natural resources. I agree with that. So, thank you.
Next, Carson and Richard.
Well, first I'll say that I agree with both of those answers. Those are both incredibly important problems, and especially managing our growth as our economy is growing and our population is growing. Another factor in this is affordable housing. A stat to take away from tonight is 2010-10. In the last year, listings of houses have gone down 20%. Inventory has gone down 10%, and housing prices have gone up 10%. Meanwhile, we have more people. There's a contraction in supply and an increase in demand. And right now, we have a huge problem on our hands that our current sitting county councilmen are not doing enough to take care of. We need to work with builders and developers and give them the tools to have the incentive to actually build the kind of housing that's going to benefit us, making sure that we still value and protect the rural areas of our county, but also taking advantage of the more dense areas of our county to build things like affordable housing, workforce housing, low-income senior housing, so that we have enough supply for quality affordable housing for everybody in our county.
Thank you.
Okay. Definitely, I want to keep our water resources here, and as a county councilman, which we oversee the budgeting and finances and whatever it will take, if it gets to the point of a legal situation, we will provide the funding to keep our resources here instead of getting them out of our community. Affordable housing, as Ben said, is definitely one of our priorities to make sure we have. And I think obviously this is one of those long-term situations where financial literacy, especially for those who need it, that is on the table where we need to work in areas that they could get the where-for-all of how to afford that, and just the securing of employment. Because obviously, if you have the knowledge and be the where-for-all of being able to work and to provide to get the housing, it's going to help. And again, that's where a lot of work with the youth and the underserved would come in an important part of our funding. So again, there's many areas, and we want to make sure we are handling and talking to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Kevin Underwood and Amanda Eldridge.
Well, there's several issues pressing this. Are you here?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. I know the font's over there, very small. It's far away.
Well, I haven't spoken yet.
No, you're not. Underwood, you may start.
All right, thank you. I think some of the very important things that we need to look forward to and most pressing issues are the fact that we've thought about not only our natural resources in terms of water, as many have mentioned, and housing, which other people have mentioned, but also we think about in terms of planning. So we have resources available for land and for other uses beyond just housing and putting more businesses. And so I think that on top of that, as we see the growth continue, we need to think very strategically about the actual infrastructure, whether it be in terms of drainage and for road funding, because those are two areas that are being stretched absolutely to their limit under our current growth that we're seeing right now.
Thank you.
So I think one of the biggest issues that's been touched on is our rapid growth. Tippecanoe, it's not what it was 30 years ago, and we can't keep acting like it was. That's common sense. It's been 30 years. We have to look at what is happening now, which is we are in a housing crisis. We need to be addressing that. We need to be addressing our infrastructure such as food deserts, lack of normal amenities, cell service, internet. We need to be considering our public safety, which is tied into all of this, especially when you look at adding a full-time health officer for the health department that can go and tackle some of the issues that we're dealing with, such as the health crisis, mental health crisis that is being experienced in our county and across the nation. It's putting, when we start addressing these issues, we're going to see definite changes, but we have to make sure that we're focusing on addressing the development and the issues that are coming up with that. Of course, we need to think about roads and infrastructure, because I don't want to drive down gravel, but we need to make sure that as we're doing this, we are looking to the future and making sure we can plan for future generations. Thank you.
Next, John Basham.
Sorry about that. We have many issues that are not complete. You speak about affordable housing. I build houses, and I build about 70 homes, other than doing the other stuff. And the cost of lumber is unbelievable, and the materials is unbelievable, but that's another issue. But going back to the juvenile detention center, we just didn't drop the ball on that, because there's a lot of needy young people in this community. What we did, we did a bump out on the DOC, the Department of Correction. We did a small bump out, only cost us about $350,000. And what we did, those kids, they would have to wait to go to trial and see somebody for six to eight weeks. What we did, we did that bump out, and the rate of these young people, the youth, they would see somebody that night, and the rate of recidivism was zero, and that worked great. As far as the aquifer layer you're talking about, I was environmental at Eli Lilly. I understand all about that, and I'm totally against sending millions of gallons down to Lebanon, Indiana.
Thank you. That is your time.
Totally against it. And I'd help support and help fight that issue. Thank you.
Now, moving on to our next question, we're going to start with Katie Bundar. What can the county council do to alleviate the housing shortage?
There've been some things mentioned already, but one thing we need to do is incentivize development in our existing neighborhoods. You know, all over Tippecanoe County, there are neighborhoods with blighted homes in them that could be renovated, and it would bring back the existing neighborhood and create new housing that's affordable. We also, we're going to have to build new housing, and we need to plan to build housing that is what people want and that has amenities like parks and nature preserves and things like that. We need to really do a good job so that we can attract the people who are coming to work here to also live here and contribute to our economy.
And next, we have Dean.
I think that the affordable housing, we should get rid of the government subsidized building of these houses. I think if we go private, that will eliminate a lot of the taxpayer money that is sent to build these houses, but also build other private entities and help them grow and help them contribute more to our community. I think that if we go private, those housing costs will eventually come down themselves as they build and expand, and I think that is the way we need to go with that. Thank you.
And Richard.
[inaudible]
Again, going back to affordable housing, I think the inflation and what we've experienced, especially over the last three or four years, it's here, and we're going to have to work at making it doable. And for there to be, we have government subsidized apartments and so forth to help people get on their feet and get in the right direction. So we, as a community, we really need to promote them working and being able to earn the income to afford a little bit more expensive home. And it's going to take all of us working together, the financial literacy, the work ethic, the things that we need to instill in the citizens coming into our community. A big part of our community members that are having the trouble are ones that's coming from other areas. And I think we, as long-term Tepi Canoe County residents, we've got to be prepared to take them, and that's why everybody wants to come to Tepi Canoe County. We are such a great community and very giving and very supportive. So again, we have the knowledge, we have the ability, and we'll make it good for everyone.
And Carson?
Well, we've tried the solution through the market, and right now, it's not working. You can go back to the statistic that I told you in the last point of 2010-10, that we simply don't have the right amount of supply to match the demand for people that are here. Here's another statistic that proves this. Right now, for every one person who commutes out of our county to work, there are four people who are commuting into our county to work. What that tells you is that it's a great place to be, but not currently a great place to live. That's because we aren't doing enough right now to have active planned development to ensure that there's enough housing, and not just enough housing, but the right kind of housing that can match the demographic and economic needs of our county. If I were on the county council, one of the first things that I would be doing is immediately working with those developers and builders to ensure that we can have the right kind of people coming here that are building the right kind of housing.
Underwood?
Oftentimes, one of the most important things that can impact a household's income and capability to pay their bills is how we, as the county, handles their taxpayer funds. And in order for us, as the council, to keep those investments at a way that will help their pocketbook in the most effective way is to be able to keep our budget in line with expenses as they're needed. A lot of the incentives that have been talked about would require additional taxpayer money, and so we need to think very seriously about how we're going to plan and move forward into the future.
Eldridge?
Housing is definitely a crisis in our community. There's no question about that. We do need to think about long-term housing solutions, which is working with developers to try and get affordable workforce housing in, because not everyone can afford a $5 million house. But we also need to think short-term as well. We can think long-term as we want, but it's going to take time to build those houses. So we need to go and work with our community to find a way to make sure that people have housing available right now or some kind of resource where they have shelter. But we do need to look at the market. As Ben said, as someone that bought a house a few years ago, it's intensive and it's competitive, and it's just not there. So if we want to continue to bring people to our community as it grows, we're going to have to address the housing crisis by making sure that we are working to get available housing. Thank you.
And Basham?
Well, what's the answer? Anybody have it? It's a tough question, affordable housing. Like I said, like Kevin said, until you've met a payroll and paid for material and lumber, it's hard to put a product like that together. Now, we had Habitat for Humanity. I built three homes for Habitat Humanity. That's a great program. But there, again, we've got, I don't want to get on the national scene, though, but we have a lot of illegals coming into this place, and then they're coming into our community, and they're taking up space. So then, the other person that needs a place, they don't have one. So, but I support affordable housing, if it can be done, and it doesn't turn into a pit. So if you've got an answer, I'm open for ears. I'd like to listen to it. So again, Habitat for Humanity is a great program, and I would push that program more and more. Thank you.
Starting with Katie Bundar. Does the county have problems recruiting or retaining public employees? If so, what can be done?
The county, as everybody, every employer in Tepi Canoe County, has in recent times had trouble recruiting and retaining employees. And one of the things that we need to do is really look at the salaries. When we're trying to be very fiscally conservative, sometimes we don't give the right amount of money to a particular position, and let's say a sheriff deputy can just go to the next county and maybe get a higher salary. So we need to really compare job to job with the surrounding counties and look at comparisons. At the food bank, we were able to get a book that had all the salaries for all of the food banks in the country, and that was really helpful, because I could look for places that were the size of Tepi Canoe County and then compare what a director of development made in a place like here. So that was really helpful, and I think we really need to pay attention to that if we're going to recruit and retain good staff for the county. Thank you.
Ben Carson?
The answer is yes, and we've already lost people that were part of our county previously. We've lost deputies. We've lost community corrections workers. We lost a really important crisis response specialist to another jurisdiction because they offered more competitive pay. We've also lost mental health workers. These are all positions that are incredibly important to make sure that our county can thrive and prosper. Now, this does not mean that we have to increase taxes or raise the tax burden on you to make those kinds of things happen. The current county council has the budget to allocate funds for these measures. It's just a question of making sure that that pay is competitive. If those kind of features are in place, then we can take care of those issues. But it first requires recognizing that these are workers that are incredibly valuable to the health and the future of our county, and if we're not paying them, they're going to go somewhere else. Fiscally conservative doesn't mean not spending money. It means spending money appropriately and wisely, and sometimes that does mean paying someone more if they deserve it.
Barry Richard?
I believe that as a county council member, one of my duties and responsibilities is to make sure I advocate for not only the department heads, but also the employees. And we definitely need to make sure that they're compensated in a fair, competitive way. So again, going back to where I was sheriff, I made sure that I took money, and we were very conservative with what we spent. We took $100,000 out of our commissary account, gave it to the general fund to allow the deputies to have a decent raise. Actually, that was one of the best raises the year that they've ever had. We need to keep our public safety, our deputies on the road. They are what makes our community so attractive and so safe for us. The quality of life we have, look at all of our departments, they are very, very well-maintained. They all serve very well to all the community, and we're very proud to have them here with us. We will do everything we can to keep them and compensate fairly.
Underwood?
While this is an issue here in Tepi Canoe County, we all know that it's an issue across the entire employment spectrum. It's not just an issue within any government entity, but it's an issue with our entire economy. But we have worked very hard to address some of those issues here in the last several years. For instance, we instituted a committee within the council and commissioners to evaluate and adjust salaries for our jail deputies and for also some of our prosecuting attorneys and other positions in order to try to make sure that we had adequate funding for those individual salaries, and that has helped a great deal in order with retention in those particular areas. We are evaluating those kinds of positions or salaries accordingly as we move forward through 2024 and into the future. Those are the kinds of things that we have been doing in the last several years and things that we will continue to go forward with in the future.
Amanda Eldridge?
So this specific topic really impacts me personally because I worked at the county very recently, a few years ago, as a case manager. And what I can say is that the employees are not being compensated and supported enough. I can say that because we dealt with high turnover rates as case managers, as work release employees as well. It was always a constant revolving door because they were being overburdened, they were being overworked, they were being stressed. That even goes for our jail staff. How many of us remember all the announcements of, hey, open interviews at the jail, come on down today? That's not helping our employees. What we need to do is make sure that we are making these competitive salaries, competitive positions, so we get the best. We shouldn't be out there begging for someone to show up, to apply for these jobs. We should make people want to move here, and we do have the budget for it, and we are able to compensate our employees, maybe even not by wages, but talk to them about what benefits would actually make it desirable to stay here.
John Basham?
Repeat that question again, one more time.
The question is, does the county have problems recruiting or retaining public employees? If so, what can be done?
Yes, we do. We have problems. We've tried our best. If you've ever shown up for budget hearings, you'd see what we go through, because there's a lot of entities out there that have many, many needs. Just like it was said earlier, we bring a deputy in at X amount of dollars and go to another county and get five or 6,000 more bucks. I think the question was put to us, what two departments, and I mentioned the sheriff's department. They're underfunded. They need more money, same way with the prosecutor. So we've tried, but I challenge anybody to sit in these budget hearings. I take it seriously. These people have got families to feed also, and they're going to do what they can to provide for their family. They're going to go to another county. So it is true, but I think the county council has done a great job. We did everything we can to budget, to make everything balance, and I appreciate the work we've all done.
That's the end of your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dean Bertelli?
I don't believe we have a recruitment issue so much as we do a retention issue. Like my fellow candidates have said, we've got the budget for it. There's no need to raise taxes. It's just allocating that budget, making everything competitive with our surrounding counties throughout the state, not only monetarily, but with benefits, whether that be insurance, stuff like that. All of our recruiting, I believe, is taken care of, though. You know, on all of our squad cars, you see the numbers to call or the websites to get on to go to and apply for these positions. But like I said, my fellow candidates have shown that and have said that we have the allotted budget necessary for it. We just have to make sure that we make the correct decisions in moving that money to those positions and for our county employees. Thank you.
Moving on to our next question. If the county commission reverses course and approves a full-time health officer, would the county be able to fund this position? First up, we have Carson.
Yes, I mean, the math on that is actually pretty straightforward. The county council budget is significantly larger than the cost of the salary for a health officer, so it's absolutely something that we could afford. And as I mentioned in the last answer, we already have the funds available to tackle these kinds of challenges, and so one of those ways we can use those funds is by appointing a health officer full-time. It's also important to recognize that this is not a frivolous expense. This is a necessary expense. Virtually every other county in America that has a population size like ours and an economy like ours has a full-time county health officer. That's because their role is vital. They're making sure that we're working with all the different relevant networks of healthcare in our community, whether it's our community health clinics or our social workers. Their job is to ensure that these things are working correctly, to also identify areas where emergency response services are not getting to someone in time, which can sometimes prove fatal. So a community health worker is incredibly important to make sure that we can identify those issues and tackle them.
You have reached your time. Thank you. And next, we have Richard?
Okay. The health department, obviously, is a very critical part of our community and for the safety of everyone. And as far as the position goes, our commissioners have done a great job in evaluating and assessing what positions need to be where. And I believe what the commissioners believe is that as a staff, a health department staff, they can meet those kinds of needs. And we continue to always be aware of our tax burdens on our citizens. And so it's not a matter of just being able to say someone's on full-time. It's a matter of what their responsibilities are. And to delegate some of those responsibilities to a staff, a very hard-working diligent staff is what we've got, they have the leadership within themselves to oversee what needs to be done, and as a team effort for the health department, they can come in and make sure they provide the needs to our community. Against the, again, the health department is a critical part of our well-being for Tepi Canoe County, and I support them 100 percent. And as a team, they will come through with what the commissioners have allowed for their positions.
And Underwood?
The health department is a critical function within our county government and to our community. And while I do understand what some of the arguments have been about a full-time health officer, we have also been evaluating how we, as a community, work together with a lot of the different health agencies within the community in order to provide the services to our county. Sometimes, using the staff, as Barry had mentioned, in effective ways can be more effective than trying to just put one particular point person with a great deal of an additional salary in that position. Second of all, I think it's important to realize that there's no actual real empirical evidence at this point that having a full-time health officer will actually help us meet the objectives of the state's health fund that we've been given. So in order to be able to make sure we've got all those funds being used effectively, I think we're good with the way we are doing it now.
And Eldridge?
I completely support turning this position into a full-time job because the benefits are going to outweigh pretty much anything. I've read today and have been keeping on top of the initiatives that our health department has done with a leadership, our health officer, with working on addressing substance use, working on addressing health issues in our community. That is going to be a benefit to the community as a whole, because if we're addressing those social determinants, that's going to end up decreasing the burden on the rest of the community. Imagine if we were addressing diabetes, and we could get the health officer to lead the charge with his staff to work on addressing areas that have that high impact. That is going to decrease the need on our doctors' offices, on those wait times, on the financial burden of our system. So putting, that is a smart investment to do by having a full-time health officer that can help lead that charge, because if we're getting these results at part-time, wait till we get something at full-time. Thank you.
And now, we have Basham?
As county council member, we all have our separate entities of departments, and the health department is not my assignment, but I have to participate and I listen in. I need more information, but at this point in time, I would support a full-time health officer in Tepi Canoe County. I would put that person in the position and watch it closely and see if it's been beneficial. That's my take on it.
As I said in my opening statements, I'm a political novice, and I don't have a whole lot of knowledge when it comes to the health department of our county, so I cannot give you an honest reaction or answer or a solution, for lack of better terms, as to what I would do. So I apologize for not having an answer for that.
Thank you. And Bundar? I don't think it matters.
I would support having a full-time health officer and also expanding the health department's programs so that we could serve people and collect insurance money and also money from Medicaid and Medicare. Lots of other counties do that. At Food Finders, we wanted to have a diabetes educator to, when we started getting so much produce, we wanted someone to come in and tell our clients how to put their diet together. And the only, we couldn't find anybody that would do that for free. So we couldn't, so we ended up not scrapping that idea, and it was a great idea. There's so much that an expanded health department could do for the county. We need, we have such a lack of mental health counselors. The county could, if they expanded their services, they could have a mental health counselor or at least another ombudsman that would help people find mental health resources. And the same thing for addiction treatment. There just aren't enough places that anybody can get that kind of help, and this would be a great opportunity, and I think it would pay for itself.
Thank you. You've reached your time.
We've reached the end of the question period of our debate. I would now like to ask each candidate to deliver their closing statements, starting with Barry Richard.
Thank you again to League of Women Voters, WLFI. We appreciate the opportunity to come and for all of you here tonight. And I would just like to say, it's just an honor and a privilege to be serving our a privilege to be serving our community. And who those I would like to thank, I'm, this morning when we were having our council meeting, there were people lined up out the door to vote. And I just encourage everybody to vote because that's what makes it so special. All the, we have our three candidates that's our incumbents here for the local council at large, as well as all the other four candidates that want to get into it. I thank them. I, I know there's great citizens here in our community. And we are just very fortunate to always have those that's willing to step up. And again, there's not a wrong choice. There's not a bad choice. We all work together. And one thing I would like to say as far as a member of the council, we work close with the commissioners, the mayors, everyone else in our community to make it what it is. Thank you.
Underwood, your statement.
I want to, as I said in my opening, continue to bring a sound, common sense approach to county government. I think it's vitally important that we have people that have been able to walk in the shoes of our county citizens and understand what it is that you go through on a day-to-day basis. I think it's vitally important that we have folks that have been able to walk through and been able to work with different groups to lead those folks in order to be able to come to consensus and be able to work towards solutions. I'm one of those people that have had that opportunity and would like to continue to be a critical thinker in terms of how we utilize all of the resources of our county moving into the future. Thank you.
Amanda Eldridge.
Thank you to the League, WLFI, and Jeff High School for hosting this debate. It's been an absolute honor to be here and be with all of you. I want to support my community, especially battleground in the smaller areas like West Point and Dayton, to make sure that we have a seat at the table as we continue to grow. We have discussed many of the issues that face our county. And I want to make sure that we are focusing on those, but also the outlying areas as well, because they are part of our community. I want to work with the community and the council to address these issues and bring active change that is going to benefit our county as we continue to grow, go forward. I believe that I can bring a new perspective, especially as someone who has worked at the county level and has been impacted by the decisions that the county council has made in the past. I feel that I can bring energy, compassion, and some practical common sense when it comes to addressing the needs, especially the social determinants and the concerns that we have. So I want to thank you for your time. And I hope I get your support at the ballot box. Make sure you get out and vote this year. Thank you.
Basham, your statement.
Once again, I'm John Basham, Tippecanoe County Council. And I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and WLFI for hosting this event. I've heard the word common sense mentioned so much. I fought to get that saying 16 years ago. If you look at my sign, it says, "Common sense counts." Now I hear it in Washington where common sense counts. So I want, I've always used the approach of use common sense. I listen to the constituents of Tippecanoe County and their needs. And I do the best I can. I'll give you my best. If you think I'm worthy of your vote, if so, I'd like your support and your vote for this coming election. Thank you kindly. John Basham.
Bertelli, your statement.
Again, my name is Dean Bertelli. I'd like to thank the League of Women's Voters, WLFI, Jefferson High School, and their social studies department for allowing us the opportunity, myself and my opponents here, to share our words with the residents of Tippecanoe County before this upcoming election. I would also hope that my words tonight have resonated with the community as a whole in a positive way and that I can earn the trust of the county to sensibly and responsibly make decisions regarding the county's wellbeing, growth, and financial states moving forward. The residents of Tippecanoe County deserve full transparency for their taxes that are taken and then spent. I intend to provide that to them with opposing unnecessary projects, like I mentioned early, earlier, the LEAP project as one big example, and keeping our natural resources here. Small government, less taxes, vote gold this November. Tippecanoe County, thank you again.
Bunder, your statement.
I'm running for county council because I learned a lot of hard lessons directing the change and growth at Foodfinders Food Bank. And I don't want them to go to waste. I want to put them to work for the county. I have nine years of experience developing housing for first-time homebuyers in existing neighborhoods. I want to preserve natural resources and ensure well-planned development. The decisions our county government will make in the next five years will impact our quality of life for decades. As we grow, let's take time to reimagine Tippecanoe County, keeping what we love and adding what we need. The incumbent-at-large counselors have served the county collectively for 40 years. I hope you'll decide to vote to bring a fresh perspective and visionary leadership to county government. Thank you.
Carson, your statement.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who put this on, WLFI, the LEAP Women Voters, and Jeff. And speaking of Jeff, Jeff Smith, if you happen to be listening, who recently retired after 40 years at WLFI, huge thank you to you. You've been a really important part of our news. The last thing that I'd leave you with is a bit of an echoing of some previous statements, that as our county is evolving and growing, we need to look for change. We need to look for new ways to tackle the challenges that we're currently facing. These challenges are mounting. And as they mount, and as our population, our economy grows, there's going to be a breaking point. We need to make sure that we are well prepared for that. We need to make sure that we implement a strategic budget that has a medium and a long-term to it. We need to make sure that we're incentivizing affordable housing so that people who come here can actually live here and have enough money left over. We need to make sure that our economy is set up for future generations so that we can all thrive and prosper. And although I may be the youngest on the stage, I think that I bring a lot of energy, tenacity, and have a business and teaching background that allows me to care about everybody and fight for all of you.
Thank you. That is the end of your time.
Thank you.
Well, we just want to thank each of our candidates for coming this evening. Thank you all so much. And also everyone who came out in the audience as well. So to find out more about these candidates and also all the other candidates on your November ballot, you're able to do so, we encourage you to use a League of Women Voters online voter guide at vote411.org. And you can find that site on our website at wlfi.com. Early voting, as many of them mentioned, it's underway. So please make sure to go out and vote. And thank you all so much for coming. And thank you guys at home for joining us on the livestream as well. Thank you and have a great night.